Good afternoon and welcome to today's meeting of the Fairmont School Board. It is Tuesday, November 13, 2018. Please, our roll call is we are all present except for Danielle. Please join me for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where riches stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we need to approve minutes from last time?
I'll move to approve the minutes from our last meeting, October, I'm sorry, what's the date?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Yeah, it's on there.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, and we have a green agenda, a few changes noted.
Make a motion to approve the agenda that's here tonight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And we will quickly move to celebrations, Joyce Forster.
Hello, I'm here this evening to talk about American Education Week that is from November 12th through the 16th. And I'm proud to be here tonight representing the many dedicated, hardworking educators of Education Minnesota Fairmont that is celebrating the 97th anniversary of American Education Week. As an organization, our main goal is to improve the educational opportunities for our students. We work hard to be prepared with well-organized and motivating lessons for our students. We go the extra mile to help meet our students' needs to help them find success. Secondly, Education Minnesota Fairmont works to help our profession by providing training opportunities to better our instruction. We meet with other teachers across the state to exchange ideas and to keep abreast on current trends in education. Lastly, our organization believes in giving back to the community of Fairmont which supports us so fully. And we do this in a lot of ways. In October, just the beginning of October, we had a cool float in the homecoming parade with the theme, teamwork makes the dream work, and evidently it worked since our boys are going to the US Bank Stadium. And then we went on to show our appreciation to the many individual groups that help support us and keep our schools running smoothly, such as the bus drivers, crossing guards, custodians, office personnel, tech support people, our administrators, and of course, your school board with notes and small tokens of appreciation. We ring the bell for the Salvation Army every December for a number of days at the local grocery store to help out in that way. We head up a school-wide food drive every March in which the students bring canned goods to restock the local food shelves at a time when is much needed. We participate at the career fair at the high school in which we man a booth to give information about the teaching profession. We choose a community organization and an individual from our community to honor as our friend of education for supporting our school. We sponsor both a youth soccer team and a T-ball team. And we give a scholarship each year for dollars, to an individual senior for dollars for scholars. Lastly, we started our biggest community project a couple of years ago when we started distributing books during the interlock and heritage parade. Last year, we distributed over 2,800 children's books to kids ages zero to 18. And we'd love to continue this project, but since I'm talking to the community, it takes money to purchase all these books. So if any community, organization, or individual would like to contribute to this wonderful venture we do each year, you can contact me at Fairmont Elementary. I just want to thank you for allowing me to share some of the projects Education Minnesota Fairmont is involved in. We are humbled and honored that the citizens of Fairmont trust us with their most valuable possession, their children. We take this responsibility seriously, and we promise to do all we can to give them the best education possible. This week, we're celebrating our public school in a variety of ways. At the elementary, each classroom teacher donated books. And then we put them in boxes, and they've been distributed to various businesses in town as a giveaway to the children. So we kind of like giving away books, so we did it again during the year. So if you would go to Taco John's or different places in town, you'll see a book box full of books that kids can take for free. And the children all wrote essays touting why they believe education is important to them. And they are displayed throughout our school building, so parents can read them at conferences coming up. At the high school, all the students are writing notes of appreciation to teachers who have been special by making a difference in their lives. The teachers all wear their Red Education Minnesota Fairmont T-shirt on Monday to kick off the week for Wear Red for Ed. And then on Wednesday, we will all don our college T-shirts or sweatshirts to highlight the importance of being a lifelong learner. And on Friday, both schools will wear cardinal attire to show pride in being one of the best schools in the state, Fairmont area schools. Now, as a part of the many activities we are doing to celebrate public education this week, I have brought along a few of those precious students who would like to share why education is important to them. And I will start with Clark Hazard.
Hi, my name is Clark Hazard, and I'm in fourth grade, and my teacher's name is Mrs. Forster. Why education is important to me? Education is very important to me. Without an education, I would have never learned math like nine times seven equals sixty-three. I also would have never learned to read, but thanks to my education, I've read every Harry Potter book. I learned how to act, and I made lots of friends. I've learned about lots of states and countries and social studies, how electricity works in science. And if it wasn't for my education, I wouldn't be writing this story. As you can see, education is very important to succeed. I will not waste this opportunity. It is the key to my future and the future of others because I want to be a teacher.
Hi, my name is Caroline Lozano. I'm in fourth grade, and my teacher's name is Mrs. Forster. Why education is important to me? Do you know why education is important to me? Education is important because it gives me a chance to get a great job when I grow up. It gives me a chance to read one of my favorite books like Where the Red Fern Grows. I get to act in plays. I was Peckles Bill in our school play. I get to learn about science. I learned multiplication, subtraction, addition, and division. I learned to read and write. Education is important to me because not all kids around the world can go to school because they have to pay. But in Fairmont, it is free. As you can see, education is very important to me. I hope it is as important to you as it is to me.
Hello, my name is Denistosola, and I'm in fourth grade, and my teacher's name is Mrs. Forster, and this is why education is important to me. Education is important to me. I get to go to school free of charge while some kids in the world have to work. I love to write. When I grow up, I want to be an author. School helps me learn the figures of speech and teach them, and I teach them to my mom. School helps me read good series like Diary of a Wimpy Kid and a series of unfortunate events. School helps me meet new friends. School helps me do plays and act in front of big crowds of people. Education means the world to me. I try to never miss a day of school.
Hello, I am Francesca Lilly Martin, and I am in fourth grade, and my teacher is Mrs. Forster. Why education is important to me? Education isn't so important to me. If I did not have an education, I would not even know the simple multiplication facts. I have learned to read, and one of the best books is Goosebumps. It is so good. If I did not have an education, I would not get far in life. I love my school, my friends, and my teacher, Mrs. Forster. I've learned how to do social studies, science, and how to work as a team. Every day, I get to go to school and learn new things. It is so great. If I did not, do not have any education, I would never achieve my dream of being a scientist. As you can see, education is very important, and it is one of the most important things in the world.
So as you can see, the children at Fairmont Elementary do understand the importance of the education that they get here in Fairmont, and they are all very happy to be Fairmont Cardinals, right, guys? Thank you for letting me share tonight.
Joyce, if these children are representative of your class, you must have a wonderful job.
I do. Every day is a great day, isn't it, guys? What do we start the day off when I say, how does the fourth grade feel?
We feel great.
So yes, we do love school. Thank you.
You children did an excellent job. You're all very bright kids. Thank you so much for coming.
Well done, all of you. Thanks very much. That was wonderful.
Okay, we have another celebration. Steph Johnson?
Well, that was really fun. I'm glad I was here to be able to see that. Thank you, Joyce, and thank you, kids. My name is Steph Johnson, and I am privileged to be here tonight representing the Martin County Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition. I wanted to share a little bit about our coalition and have brought some guests along to help me with that. I'd like to ask them to come up here and please introduce themselves. As I said, my name is Steph Johnson. I am the coalition coordinator, but I'm also the mom of two of students at Fairmont High School. I have Jaden, who is a junior at Fairmont Junior Senior High School, and Jackson, who is a ninth grader who is new this year from St. Paul's Lutheran. And it's been fun to have him be part of student council and the play, as well as Yoko. And I've really seen him just blossom there, so I'm so thankful to have him there.
I'm Hannah Bautte. I'm in ninth grade, and I'm a leader in Yoko.
And I'm Kate Collin-Bach. I am all new to this. I am the new teacher advisor for Yoko and have had the privilege of meeting with the kids once during a FAST schedule. And got to go to my first coalition meeting today, so over the noon hour. So I'm brand-new, fresh, and really trying to learn what's going on, so.
I'm Alyssa Ciati. I am representing Fairville-Martin-Wantone County's statewide health improvement program, or SHIP.
Awesome. So thank you very much for being here to help me today. We just wanted to show you a few things that we are doing right now. Our mission with Martin County Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition is that we are working together to eliminate alcohol, marijuana, and prescription drug abuse among young people in Martin County by helping them become leaders and supporting them in making healthy choices. So as Kate said today, we had our coalition meeting. We meet once a month. It's the second Tuesday of every month at the Holiday Inn where lunch is available. And we have coalition community members from all across Martin County. We always try to have students from our youth coalition because we know that their input is so valuable. And we have coalition members who are staff in the schools. We have other community members like Alyssa who are working on prevention. We have youth leaders in the communities as far as from churches. And what we're trying to do is just work together to seek collaboration in working together to make our community the most healthy that it can be. We also have some law enforcement that comes, and we have community policymakers which really help us because we are trying to do the best that we can do to make our environment safe and healthy and easier for kids to make healthy choices and harder for them to make non-healthy choices when it comes to substance. So we have youth coalition meetings in Fairmont at least once a month. The coalition meets during FAST, our Fairmont academic support time. And we're super excited to have Mrs. Collin-Bach, or Mrs. Kay as the kids affectionately call her, helping join with our Yoko kids. Our youth coalition is really run by our youth. They come up with the ideas and the strategies that will help make this the most effective. So that is great, and we're privileged to have them leading and for Kate to be working with them. We also have youth coalitions at Martin County West, Grenada Huntley's chain, and we're starting one in Truman. We've had two meetings already this year. And then we also have students that come and be a part of our youth coalition from Martin Luther High School. One of the things I thought you might want to know about is that we helped with a paraprofessional training that was held this summer, and it was our countywide Yoko improv group. Improv is a nationwide winning tool that helps get people talking. It's designed to inspire problem-solving discussions by creating safe, non-threatening, appropriate environments for people to be able to talk. And you can see in this picture that we had students who acted out scenarios in the classroom, and then they would stop right at a point where something would have to be decided, and the paraprofessionals would step in, and we would do a discussion on how to find out problem-solving ideas. It was great. It was so inspiring to have students working with the paras. And we heard a lot of great feedback that they both really enjoyed it and got a lot out of the training. We'd also like to tell you that we're working together to reduce access across the county. We do a sticker shock collaboration with local liquor stores, and it's a countywide reminder to adults just to remember to please keep your alcohol out of the hands of young people. We have stickers and bottle hangers when people buy their alcohol that will remind them of that. And then on the back of the bottle hangers, it gave ideas for parents and adults on how they can talk to the young people that are in their lives about alcohol and the dangers of underage drinking. It also gave our website, which our website has a lot of ideas for people to be able to get ideas on how to talk and have those hard conversations with kids. We also work with law enforcement on a responsible beverage server training. And the law enforcement actually leads the class, but it's open to anyone in the county. And we know that our county and our city does a really good job at carding under, or carding people when they buy alcohol. And we know through data that young people don't buy alcohol for themselves. So that's great to know. They're doing their jobs and carding and keeping that out of the hands of young people. We also, I handed out some drug deactivation packets, and those are important because if you have extra, say, prescription drugs, if you've had surgery or something, and you have extra drugs in your home, those hand, those pills could possibly get into the hands of people and be misused. They call them farm parties or Skittles parties, farm, as in pharmacy parties where kids, because young people think it's a prescription drug, somebody uses it, so it's safe. It can't be that dangerous. So we want to make sure we keep it out of the hands of young people. So that's a way that you can just go ahead and use those packets. You open them up and pour it right into the bottle that you have left over and shake it up, and it will solidify. And then it's completely safe to throw in the garbage. We've been handing those out into the community. We found out Walmart actually does a nationwide program where any opioids that they give out, they actually give this packet to their customers right away. And so we went online and we ordered those. Those packets are only about a dollar apiece, and we handed them out to area pharmacies and let them know. We gave them a little sample of them and let them know these are available. And we've even had pharmacies tell us they're going to look into purchasing them to offer them to their customers as well. We also dropped some off at the law enforcement center, which there is a drop box there. But these packets are sometimes more convenient to take with them. So we do have extras available if anyone would like them. As I said, we have helped with law enforcement, getting them to do compliance checks. Compliance checks test the capability of area businesses selling alcohol to young people. And now the law enforcement is also working on compliance checks for tobacco, which is really important to do. We just want to help stop the access or reduce the access to young people. As I said, there's a take it to the box, box. And then we also are testing an alcohol security at-home sticker if anyone is interested. It's a little sticker. It almost looks like a label that you'd put on a letter, and people can use that to put around their bottle. And if it's peeled off or twisted off and turned, it says void on it. And it's just a great way to be able to make sure that no one is getting into your bottles that you don't want it to be. So it's a brand-new in-home testing strip that we're doing. And if you're interested, go to our website and contact me, or you can get ahold of me, and we'd love to have you be part of that. We've also been working together with our schools. We're so proud of Fairmont School for really educating our parents about tobacco and especially the epidemic of e-cigarettes, the jewels and things that are happening. Alyssa, through SHIP, our statewide health improvement partnership, we did an education night at the end of September and had parents and some educators, and they came and learned all about the different types of devices and how to see what there are. They're so hard to find out. Some of them look like pens, or they look like computer chips. And just to educate our parents and our staff, that's so important. So thank you to Fairmont High School for letting us do that and also for sending out that letter. I actually had a personal testimony from a parent who said they took out one of those pods out of the washing machine and set it up on top of the washing machine to give back to their child, thinking that it was a computer drive because it looks like a little computer pod. And they got the letter and started looking on our website and found out more information, and we're so happy. It gave them a chance to have that conversation. And there's a lot of misperception with young people that they think it's safe, and they think it's, you know, a safe alternative. And so it gave them the chance to talk to their kids and educate them about the dangers of that. So thank you to the school for sending that information out. And thank you to Alyssa for helping us educate. We also work really hard in trying to give kids something better to do than drugs and alcohol. There are so many great things going on, like the play at school and sports. We've been so blessed to be able to partner together with businesses in town. Perkins did a dine to donate for us and gave us money so we could buy prizes for our Yoko Fun Night. We bought an iPad mini, and we also got lots of different donations from people around town. And it was great to be able to give those out and give the kids something fun to do. Graffiti Corner does a fifth-quarter event for us anytime we have home football games. They offer specials for our young people to come there and hang out after the games when they don't want to go home and they want a safe place to hang out. And it's been great to see that really grow, and kids go there and congregate and hang out. And we also have been blessed to have the community support when we've done other things together with the community. We have a community group that put together a free night at the swimming pool, and we had prizes from the radio station, and we had money from the American Legion to buy prizes, and we had just a great turnout. So it's so, we're so lucky that businesses are giving back and helping us by sponsoring us and helping us give the kids something fun to do. One of the things that we're trying to do is really dig into data and find out what data says about substance use among our kids, and we still data says about substance use among our kids, and we still know that there are more kids who are choosing not to drink alcohol and not to do drugs, and that's so important to do because we know that kids are five times less likely to choose to make those unhealthy choices if they think other kids aren't doing it. So, you know, we all want to be like everyone else does. They also really, kids want to get their approval of their parents. So make sure as parents and as coaches and community members and neighbors that you talk to kids about how important it is for them to stay safe and make those healthy choices. We can all work together to impact each other, no matter who you are and what you do. And so we're digging into the data more, and if anyone is interested in that, we'd love to have you be part of that data with us. So you might be wondering why we wanted to come today and talk to you all about what you can do to help us. You can help promote Yoko and the youth coalition and the coalition. Talk to people who maybe have a passion for this. Maybe there's someone in your life who has a reason why they're passionate about helping kids choose to be alcohol and chemical-free. They can come join our group and help us in our prevention. Talk to your elected officials. Thank community, city council members, and Truman and Grenada for already adopting a social host ordinance. We are working on a social host ordinance in our community as well, and, and those meetings will be coming up, so talk to your law enforcement and thank them for the support of diligently keeping our youth safe by enforcing our laws. And to our community members who are making laws, like a social host ordinance, because current laws make it a little harder to hold adults responsible for allowing underage drinking to go on. It's easy to penalize young people for choosing to drink alcohol and give them, you know, give them the citation, but we know that young people aren't buying alcohol, so they're getting it somewhere. And so we really want your active participation in helping us support that, support that social host ordinance, adopting that in Martin County and in all of the cities in Martin County so that we can help prevent that. One of the things that we'd like to do is we'd really like to have a community night, like a community forum, and we just wanted to ask you all to think about that, and who do you know, or what, what would you like to know more about? How would you like to see us help in prevention? We'd love your input and any questions that you have for us. So thank you for letting me come, and do you have any questions or anything that you'd like to ask at this time?
Questions? Yoko does a great job in providing, you know, education for the students, you know, while they're here in Fairmont, at home with their parents, you know, under the umbrella of the school.
Thank you.
College is a whole different experience, and anybody that's got kids in college or knows families with kids in college, there's a lot of danger in that transition from high school to college.
Absolutely.
And, and so are there efforts within Yoko to, to, to bring that to the students' attention and maybe bring in recent grads and talk about what the realities of college campus life are like?
That's a great, that's a great question, Rufus. And one of the things that, we recently went to a program sharing conference up in St. Cloud and met with some people who are on college campuses, who are working with college students on helping them choose to make healthy choices and helping, helping with that underage drinking education as well. A lot more colleges are talking to kids now about it when they come in, and even parents. I had a parent who told me when their daughter, when they went to orientation, they actually told their daughter, not all kids are drinking when they get to college, you know, and a lot of kids are choosing to wait, and just healthy alternatives. There are a lot of also campus organizations that help with that. Obviously, you know, college is a different experience, and there are some kids that are 21 and older, and, and I think people have definitely put more, more protective factors in places in college. Mankato State was one of the colleges that was represented there, and, and we actually are collaborating with them. They have a social host ordinance and have talked, been talking to me about how that has helped their community in prevention as well. And so I know that some of the colleges are working on that, but yes, that's a great idea. I know that, that Fairmont High School actually did have a few college students come back and talk to their students. I, I don't know if it was last year, I remember Hannah Olson was one of them, so it might have been two years ago. It was either last year or two years ago, and they came in and, and had a neat question-answer kind of conversation with kids.
I think it's important enough that that should be like a recurring activity.
Yeah, that's a great idea. I'll bring that back.
I was, I just did a college tour of Grinnell College. It's a, it's a very elite undergraduate school in Iowa, and on the tour, I asked the tour guide, a senior, you know, what, what, what the school is doing about, about problems with alcohol and drug use on campus. And one of the, an innovative program that they have on campus is they train students as what's called active bystander. So when they, when they're with their peers and they see another student who may have drank too much alcohol, or, or they think maybe at risk, they intervene, and they're trained to intervene. And so I think it's important for, for, you know, for our high school kids to know that some of these programs may be in place, and, and it's a great way to extend, you know, the security and the protective measures that the campus has, and they can't be everywhere, you know, all the time. And so to use students, responsible students, to help oversee their peers is a great idea.
Yeah, and we have something called an upstander, so it's not just a bystander, but an upstep standard, a kind of step up and say something. And again, that kind of goes along, you know, when you see something, say something, and obviously the health and well-being of your peers is way more important, and, you know, will definitely keep you from getting in trouble if you need to say something to get someone help.
Okay.
So.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Steph, I had a question about these.
Hi, Dan, yes.
First of all, I'm glad you explained what they were, because when I first saw them, I thought there was a package of Sweet Tarts, and I was gonna.
Right.
Open it and eat it.
Yeah.
But this is, how new is this? Because I know, and I've had, when we talked with folks on the radio before from, from law enforcement, you know, about the Take It To The Box program, that they have in the past, and Del can maybe help me with this, had to take those drugs all the way to like St. Louis or something like that to get them disposed of properly, but now we can do that using these here in, right in, right in town?
I don't know about those or these, and we have the other packets that we've worked with mail to give throughout the community, community. They're all viable options. The Take It To The Box serves one venue. I think if they would give these out with every opioid prescription, that would probably be a great, great way too. So the more, the more different approaches, the better, because everybody's different.
Absolutely.
So.
Yeah.
Doterra.
Doterra bags, yep, yep.
Bags. And they're still available, and these are great, and just walk up to the law enforcement center, you can drop your stuff in a box. That too, we do have to take it a long ways, however far the closest place is, is where, I shouldn't say we, they have to take it. Retirement is wonderful.
[laughing]
But, but they'll, they don't care how many miles they have to travel to get rid of that stuff in a safe manner.
Absolutely.
So, and these can just go into the garbage can then?
Yes, so it solidifies and deactivates.
Makes it inert, okay.
Yes, yeah, the medicine, and then you can just go ahead and throw it right in the garbage.
Because getting into the water and into the ground is a big problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why we need to deactivate it.
If you throw away stuff, if you flush it down the toilet, it ends up in our lakes.
Right, exactly.
And that's not good.
You don't want to do that. Yep, and convenience is the biggest thing. The reason why we like these packets versus the Doterra, Doterra bags, the bags are about, I think, almost like $5 apiece unless you buy, you know, a whole bunch of them. But these were about a dollar apiece, and the convenience of that, you can have that in your purse, you can have it, you know, in your medicine cabinet, wherever, and, and then on the back of it, it just shows how easy it is to use.
Well, if you have any lobbying abilities, they should put these with every opioid prescription if we could get it.
Yeah, that's, that is great, isn't it? I hope so.
I think even for some people, I mean elderly, sometimes they have just pills laying around that they don't take and haven't taken for years. I mean, you know, just a source for some people to get some of those taken care of too, that have been in your medicine cabinet, that, you know, you don't even recognize the date anymore on them or something, so.
Yes, that's right.
You know, I mean, this happens.
Absolutely.
And, you know, it's just very important. I mean, any kind of medication, not even opioid, opioids, but, you know, any kind.
Absolutely.
To keep it out of our.
Yeah, yeah, and we know, you know, with ADHD medicine and things that are out there, you know, you might be trying to get the right prescription and the right amount, and you might have extras, and, and it's just so important to keep that out of the hands of people that, that aren't going to use it for the right way, so. And I'm sure as a, as a nurse, Julie, you know, you know that it is, it's so important. So the convenience of this is just great. We have lots of these available, so if anyone needs some, I have a few, I think probably about 500 still in my office, and we've been handing them out to everyone, so we're going to try to get them out into the community. But just having awareness and conversations like this is so important, so thank you for that.
Thanks, Steph.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Alyssa.
Okay, Superintendent.
Thank you. First of all, you mentioned Grinnell College, and as you know, Robin and I came from Powashake County, where Monizuma is the county seat of Powashake County, where Grinnell College is at. And Grinnell's about a town of about the size of Fairmont. It's about 10,000 people, really nice community. Well, here we go. First of all, enrollment report, the board takes a look at the new enrollment report. We're, good news and bad news, we're actually up eight students at the elementary, we're down five students at the high school, so we have a net gain of three this week. Now, we have a new first grader, second grader, fourth grader, three new fourth graders, and two new sixth graders. Two less eighth graders, one less ninth grader, and two less eleventh graders, so a net of three. If you look at your pink calendar, I'll highlight just a few things. First of all, tomorrow at 12:05, there is a school board luncheon with sixth grade student, students at the William Bud Room, and, so it's at 12:05 tomorrow. On Thursday, November 29th, I'll be meeting with one of our new school board members, Michael Edmund, at nine o'clock in the morning. On Friday, at two o'clock, I'll be meeting with one of our other new school board members, Mari Myron. And this is a new addition to our calendar, but on Friday, that's November 16th, there'll be a curriculum committee meeting at nine o'clock in the morning, and that will be held at the district office. And then I just want to publicly acknowledge the musical that many of us saw last week. Boy, that was delightful. That was really impressive, and brought tears to my eyes. And then the last couple of days, Andy Tredo and I have been with Bob O'Neen. We've been in Brainerd, Minnesota. We went up Sunday night, and we came back early this afternoon. Bob O'Neen was one of four teachers that was given a Teacher of Excellence Award by the Minnesota Rural Education Association, and they had just a wonderful banquet last night, about 300 people attended, representing all different school districts throughout the state, mostly rural, smaller school districts. And Bob did a great job presenting, and he got a nice little award. And on the way home today, Andy Tredo and I stopped at a church. We stopped at Westminster Church in Minneapolis to watch Presidential historian Michael Beschloss speak. He's written nine books. His latest book is called Presidents Of War, and he spoke for about 30 minutes, then took Q and A for 30 minutes, and the place was packed. And about once a year, I try to get up to that forum, it's called the Westminster Forum, and if those of you are listening, you can listen to that on public radio tonight at nine o'clock, they're going to replay that. But if you go to Westminster Forum and Google that, you can actually pull up these individual speeches from the last year. And then I just want to provide best wishes to the football team. As you know, the football team will be playing in the quarterfinals at US Bank on Saturday at 4:30. There are two pep buses that are scheduled to go, and when I was coming home tonight, we called into the high school, there's only 11 seats left on one of the buses, the other bus is full, so we do expect both buses to be full. That's it.
Thank you. Finances, donations, Dan?
Well, we have a couple of donations here. First, in Appendix A, I introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption, whereas Carpet Plus in Fairmont donated to the high school robotics team, a 12 by 16-foot piece of Gray Level Loop commercial carpet valued at $191, be it resolved by Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept this gift.
Second.
We'll do roll call. Del?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Motion passes next.
And another in Appendix B, I introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption, whereas a $1,350 donation was made by the Fairmont firefighters to purchase shirts for CER Elementary Girls and Boys Basketball Programs, be it resolved by Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept the gift.
Second.
Oh, go ahead.
Del? Roll call, Del?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Motion passes next.
Oh, we have one more. Okay. I introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption, whereas a $500 donation was made by Fairmont firefighters to help fund the second-grade spring field trip to Como Zoo, be it resolved by Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept the gift.
Second.
Roll call, Del?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, finances, Julie?
Yes, in your packet, you should have received the financial business for this meeting. First sheet would be the transfer wires for October 19th to November 8th, and it's just very similar to what we've always talked about, or just like a little bit of a different format, but it just tells what the, what things are and where they came from and that. So, but there's nothing really to bring up to your attention for that. Then there was also a, three checks here from the single checks that were put in to, just for a last minute, so we could get some savings and stuff on that, and there wasn't anything there to bring your attention to. The P card, the P card is the way that the school district pays for a lot of its bills, also pays, I see Amazons on here, there's also when they register for conferences, and it's just really kind of a handy way for food and venue items that way to, to put on this, so there wasn't anything on that. And then we come to the register, that's in the last section of your packet, and I just had a couple I wanted to bring up to you. Let's see, Bouquet Building Supply, check number 61866. That's some of our storm damage that's starting to be repaired in that, and we did all over the county, we had, you know, repairs all over, we were one of the other misfortune that happened that night, and so we're working at getting those things repaired. The next check is 61868, Bright Aero Technologies, and I thought this was kind of an interesting one. This is our auto dialer, and it's an annual fee that we pay to use this auto dialer, and we're charged per student on the auto dialer, and there just is, if, you know, if somebody's not getting the calls, please let Judy Kapiski knows at the office, or if somebody's getting them that don't want them, but just let us know the same way that. But it's just a great way to notify all students of events or changes in the calendar and that by just making a simple phone call for the district, so it is very helpful. And here's one, 61891, and this is to Hobby Link, and what it looks like is, this is some of the curriculum, and it looks like, those are, what I can see, those are all like airplane names, is that?
Those are airplane models that are used by Jerry Brooks's Principles of Flight class.
That's what I wondered, and that's what, I mean, that's what I had for my information on it, so. But I just thought, I just wanted to bring that up to attention, that, you know, this class is up and going, and lots of interest in that. And then, let's see, check number 61912, and then the next one, 6113, first one's to Minnesota State University, Mankato, and the next one's to Minnesota West. These are college and the school classes, PSEO, and then also the Minnesota West is another tuition. another tuition for the whole fall of PSEO, and so you'll see those amounts there. One student in, in the Minnesota State, the 24866, that's one student who receives 12 credits there, and then the college and the school, that is another course. And then the Minnesota West is 39 students with a total of 211 credits that they're earning from our school district, through our school district and that, so. And the last one is check number 61920, a lot of them this week I wanted to bring your attention to, but this is some of the band instruments that we have been purchasing to kind of get our band program, some of the instruments back in shape. And so that's 14,310, I think there is, $20,000 was allocated for that amount that we were using. It's a, it's part of our matching funds, am I right, Superintendent?
Yes, and that will be publicly announced in two weeks.
Okay, so we're not talking about that yet, so forget I said anything.
Okay.
Okay? So, but that's just a wonderful opportunity for our district to have some opportunity like that.
That we're not going to talk about.
So we're not going to talk about that. I'm not, I'm not, that's done, we'll talk about it in two weeks.
Stay tuned.
Yeah, there you go. Oh, that was a teaser.
So, we need a motion?
Oh, I need to do that, don't I? Finish that up, Dan. So I'll make a motion to approve the wire transfers for October 19th, 2018 to November 8th, 2018, and payment of the November 13th, 2018 bills, and the single checks, P cards and all that are all included in that.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Okay, old business, new business, the canvas of the school board election.
Yep, we have a resolution that we need to go over. Be it resolved by the school board of independent school district number 2752 as follows. It is hereby found, determined and declared that the general election of the voters of the district held on November 6th, 2018 was in all respects duly and legally held, called and held. As specified in the attached abstract, in return of votes cast, the following votes were cast for the election of three school board members for a four-year term vacancies on the board caused by expiration of term on the first Monday in January next, following the general election as follows. Rufus Rodriguez, 3,159 votes, Michael Edman, 3,010 votes, Martha Myron, 3,015 votes, John Jabo, 2,010 votes. Candidates Rufus Rodriguez, Martha Myron and Michael Edman, having received the highest number of votes, are elected to four-year terms beginning the first Monday in January 2019. The school district clerk is hereby authorized to certify the results of the election to the county auditor of each county in which the school district is located in whole or apart. I, Nicole Green, introduce the foregoing resolution and move its adoption with motion seconded by.
Second.
Julie, Dan Brookins, upon vote being taken thereof, the following voted in favor thereof.
Okay, thank you.
So, we need a vote.
We need a roll call?
Aye.
Can I vote?
Yes.
Okay. I vote yes.
You're still a board member.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passes. Personnel, who's going to do?
Oh. I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
So, we have a resignation, Michelle Anderson, a special education para, she has tendered her resignation, and that would be effective November 2nd, 2018. Michelle has been employed by, as a para professional since 2014. So I would then make a motion to approve the resignation of Michelle Anderson effective November 2nd, 2018.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
And employment. Del?
Jim Davidson is recommending that Heidi Andrews be employed as a special education para professional to replace Michelle Anderson. Heidi has a three years of experience working as an assistant teacher at the Child Care Center and preschool in Cedar Falls and has also worked as a substitute para professional. I would make a motion to approve the employment of Heidi Andrews as a special education para professional effective November 5th, 2018 at a salary of step one.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we have an appendix for the winter's coaches, it's in Appendix E, as presented there. If you have any questions, we can talk about it during the discussion portion, but I would move to approve the employment of the winter athletic coaches for 2018, 2019, as represented in Appendix E.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye. I think we just, it looks like we have just one position that's left to be hired.
Looks like the winter assistant boys hockey coach to be determined, so if anybody's interested in that position. And otherwise, good returns, we've got just one new coach otherwise, so that's wonderful to keep some consistency in, in our sports activities, so.
And then finally, I would like to make a motion to approve the employment of Katie Hart as a para professional effective November 14th, 2018 at a salary of step one.
Second.
Oh, go ahead. Why is missing out?
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Del. We have a contract change, Nicole?
Yes, it's being recommended that there be a contract change to Superintendent Brown's contract for the 2019 to 2022 contract. Due to T R A guidelines, the change would affect one day, which is his current start date from July 1st to July 2nd of 2019. And in making this change, it will save the district $35,000 over three years. Therefore, I move to approve the contract change for Superintendent Brown's contract 2019 to 2022, to start from July 1st, 2019 to July 2nd of 2019.
Second.
Second. Go ahead. Go ahead, I don't mind.
I'm asking. Julie? Okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would thank you for looking into that and doing that extra to save us, that even, I mean, $35,000 can make a big difference in an annual salary or in, you know, annual budget for our district. So I really appreciate looking into that and trying to, you know, we, we've really been trying any which way we can to save money where we can and then use it where it's most needed, so I really appreciate that.
And that's a savings over the three years.
But still, I mean, that's, that's money that we wouldn't have had otherwise, so it's just wonderful.
Thank you.
So enjoy your day off.
Yeah, see, that's worth a day off.
Enjoy your day off.
I will. I'm not coming in that day.
Okay, Julie, you're on for medical leave?
Yes. Let's see, let me see where we're at. Oh, we have Jan Barnick, high school para professional, who's requested a medical leave beginning November 12th, 2018 through January 22nd, 2019, or per medical recommendation. So I'd make a motion to approve a medical leave for Jan Barnick, a high school para professional, beginning November 12th, extending through January 22nd, or per medical recommendation.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have another memorandum of understanding. And who's going to do that?
Del.
Del?
Okay, on October 30th, we met to talk about this and it's a memorandum of understanding for the retiree health insurance. It was talked about for one specific person where we realized that things just aren't the same for everybody and instead of making a, a ruling for just that one individual, we wrote the MOU for everybody and we wrote it generically so that it allows them to use their accrued benefits as best fits their insurance needs, so. I would make a motion to approve the EMF memorandum of understanding as presented.
Second.
Nicole?
We got it?
Or Dan?
Dan.
Take your pick.
Okay.
Okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, move to board committee reports. Del, staff welfare?
Well, we just got done talking about a lot of the staff, welfare stuff. The superintendent's contract seems like a little thing, just one day movement, but it did indeed save the, the school district a lot of money and it, it supplies the same or equal benefit for, for Mr. Brown and we do appreciate your willingness to do that. That's awesome and that's really good stuff. Secondly, we are employing a math intervention prefer, excuse me, a math intervention position for grades three through six, and that's just something that's going to benefit a lot of kids that need help. And we had the opportunity to do that and it all worked out and Pam Rolzma is filling that position, so we're very pleased with that. We talked, we talked about the resignation of the para professionals and then this MOU on retirement health insurance was a bigger item, a bigger ticket item. And again, we, we aren't costing the, the school district any money and we're trying to best treat our employees and insurance and health insurances, it's a big deal, so. It worked out well for everybody and I think that in the long run, it was clearly the right thing to do. And instead of doing it for just each individual, it was good to set up something generically that would apply to, throughout the, throughout the school district. That's kind of the staff welfare minutes.
Thank you. SDCC?
Yep. We met yesterday afternoon and probably the big item that most of the public would like to know is that the calendar was approved by SDCC and now it will come forth to the board, probably at our next meeting or the first meeting in December, first meeting in December, for board approval. And so we'll be taking a look at that calendar and get it out to the public. It's nice to get it out sooner, we, so families have time to plan vacations with their employers and, and with their children who might be away. So it's, it's, we're trying to be proactive that way. And one of the main concerns that this calendar addresses, as we try to this year as well, is that most all of the days, with the exception, I believe, of the back to school conferences, have both the high, junior, senior high school and the elementary on the same calendar. So if one of your students is in one building, the student in the other building will have the day off as well.
That's helpful.
And if I can recall, there were no changes, were there? Or were there, were there any changes to the calendar during SDCC?
No.
Because there's a two-week time off at Christmas time, a year from now, not this Christmas, but.
Next year.
A year from now.
Yep.
Because of the way the calendar, it's a late graduation day, I think it's the 8th or so.
It's the 7th, it's still the first Sunday in June.
Okay, right? That's great, yeah.
Probably one of the latest days that it'll be.
It is.
I had one that graduated on that day, but it was fine. I don't remember if we had two weeks at Christmas, but.
Okay, anything else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. In the presence of the band.